Okay, good evening, everybody. It's the Monday, February 28th Planning Commission meeting. And due to the state of California's declaration of emergency, this means being held via video conference pursuant to AB 361. City council and commission meetings are not currently open to in-person attendance. So if you're watching, you know we already figured out how to watch. It's either on channel 26 or it's video streamed through the city's website. If you want to participate in public comment through your computer pads or Androids, you can go through HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash USO2web.zoom.us forward slash I forward slash eight seven six three seven one four nine zero one zero or HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash zoom.us forward slash join. The webinar ID is eight seven six three seven one four nine zero one zero. And there's my phone is air code six six nine nine hundred six eight three three or air code two five three two one five eight seven eight two or air code three four six two four eight seven seven nine nine. So remember when you're speaking, when you ask, provide your name and city of residence. Each speaker will be afforded up to three minutes to speak. And speakers will be muted until their opportunity to provide public comment. And let's see. I guess we can go ahead and call to order. I was looking for that other thing you're supposed to say. Oh, land acknowledgement is kind of what I'm going to say here now. Before we begin, we would like to acknowledge the Alone people who are the traditional custodians of this land. We pay respects to the Alone elders, past, present, and future, who call this place Alone Land, the land that Pinot sits upon their home. We're proud to continue the tradition of coming together and growing as a community. We thank the Alone community for their stewardship and support, and we look forward to strengthening our ties as we continue our relationship with mutual respect and understanding. So I'm calling this to order, and so we'll start with the pleasurable. So here we go. Pleasurable.
Pleasurable. United States of America. To the republic which is one nation under God. It is a beautiful world. It is a team of justice for all.
Okay, so David, do a roll call.
Yeah. Commissioner Vines.
Here.
Commissioner Martinez.
Here.
Commissioner Benzoli.
Here.
Commissioner Wong. Absent. Commissioner Current.
Here.
Vice Chair Moriarty.
How's it?
Chair Ben Willis.
I'm trying to say here because I couldn't hear any of that.
Yeah, yeah, so we're here. We have, okay, so we have six out of the seven commissioners. So we have, we have a quorum where we can take action on any item on the agenda tonight. Now we can't hear you.
Oh, really?
Oh, there we go. All right.
Yeah, you can hear, okay. So can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so now I'll do citizen be heard. The public may address the planning commission on items which are within its jurisdiction and not otherwise listed on the agenda. Planning commissioners may discuss the matter brought to their attention by state law through the ground act. Action must be deferred to a future meeting. And time allotted for anyone is five minutes each. David, do you have anything on the left speak?
I don't have anybody, I don't have anything on my email now, so. Unless Justin has something. Justin, do you have anything?
I see a caller, but I don't see a handrail.
Okay.
There we go. We do have a caller ending in the number five seven four eight.
Yeah, I'm still having trouble hearing. So our first thing we're going to do is to vote on the meeting minutes of the.
There is a caller. Do you mind muting item after the call?
Yeah, we have a call, we have a call, we have a public comment. Did you hear me, Tim?
Was it, did you stop at the box this kid?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah. Barely.
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you barely. Go ahead and start the timer, Justin.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, I'm calling for the public comment section. I'm a forty-plus-year longtime resident in Taxpa, Pinot. And on behalf of myself and community friends and neighbors, I have two or three issues I wanted to ask your help and support on with the city. I know a few of you may have been involved in this earlier on, but what, what is the situation with the Pinot Valley Road still about in and around Seamus Avenue down through the high school to the library? Because there's been an ongoing issue there with half of the streetlights almost blocked being out, like it's like every other one is on from Seamus Street to Helena Street, but from Helena all the way down past Estrella and Ramona and to the library, there are no lights on at all. And it's bad enough, they only have the streetlights on one side of the street. So it's like going through the Dark Ages there with no streetlights. And it's a public health and safety issue. And I brought this up with one of the councilwomen, and they just seemed to blow me off, and they said it's PG&E's fault. But I know the city of Pinot was involved with PG&E and the contractors that did the high school to fix that situation with the lighting with the wiring. And there's a telephone pole, two telephone poles tied together with duct tape almost with wires hanging over the sidewalk, blocking ADA sidewalk cutaway there, as I might add, right there on Granada Street. And it's been there for months, if not going on two years now. And the last councilwoman said, oh, that's PG&E's problem. Well, we better make it our problem because the squeaky wheel gets the grease there working with or without PG&E to take that pole down and open up that sidewalk and fix the lighting on Pinot Valley Road once and for all. Some vandals might pull the wires and cables down on that telephone pole there on the corner of Pinot Valley Road and Granada, opposite Shea. And, and like they did, and destroyed all the fencing or half of the fencing in five or six sections in front of the library, whether that's lit up or not. The librarian, the county librarian, and the other librarian, and they don't seem to want to fix that. So, you know, let the, let the kids and the vandals have at our city so we can make it a third-world city. And the streets need to be restripped up and down throughout the valley and Pinot Valley Road. The crosswalks need to be restripped. The parking on Adobe Road spaces need to be stripped. You know, what, what is the city doing with the taxpayers' money? People ask me. It's a public health and safety problem and a quality of life issue for, for our community. As well as the breach on Pinot, Pinot Creek is still there, size of a truckload. And, and the breach there behind the Sprouts Shopping Center and Bowden Alley on the side of the creek, it's the size of a Mack truck. And it's been reported a few times by a public citizen to the county, and, and they haven't done anything about it. And, and you people were supposed to look into it, or one of the city staffers, that is. So we, we would like to get some answers from the staffers and maybe support from the, some of the commissioners to, to have the city council work with the staffers to get this resolved. Because they're not listening to the average county and taxpayer citizens. So they need somebody like a commissioner or, or a public spokesman on our behalf to get things rolling here, to, to get our, our city in order. Thank you.
Okay. David, does Public Works know about this?
I'll, I'll inform them, I'll inform them about these issues. I know, I know they are working on the lights. There's a lot of stuff they're working on down there, PG&E, a lot of issues. But I can see where we're at and kind of what the status is on that. So I'll check on the status of that, what, what's going on down there.
Is there anyone else that likes, would like to speak?
Chair Ben Willis, I do see someone with the number ending in nine six four six. They don't have a handrail. Oh, that's, oh, really?
Oh, that's me. I'm trying to lose the train to hear on my phone as well as listen. I have a lot of things to say.
And in that case, if there's no one else, I'm one lying here.
Okay. All right, so now we'll go to meeting minutes. And I think I started as we went back to other stuff. So meeting minutes from December 13th, 2021. Does anybody have anything they'd like to talk about on that? Or any corrections they'd like to make on that, on those minutes?
Yeah, I have my correction I'd like to make. In the minutes on page, let's see. Page four, it says, I had some comments related to the Hazel Street project. I think it would be larger to say, I asked whether I could offer questions or comments related to that project given the residence. Not that I made comments, because obviously I wasn't allowed to do that.
So on line fifteen, it says, in response to Commissioner Vines's comment, in response to Commissioner Vines, who had some comments related to the Hazel Street project, Mr. Wong stated, what would you like that to say?
Let's say, in response to Commissioner Vines, who wouldn't know whether he was permitted to comment on the Hazel Street project.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
That's the notification I wanted to have into the minutes.
Okay. Does anyone else have any, any changes they'd like to add to the minutes? Seeing none, I'd like to request that someone make a motion on approving the minutes.
I approve that the minutes be approved as inputted.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and then a second.
Do you have a view?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Hold me with the second.
There was that.
Yeah, Adam, okay.
Yeah. And so we're going to do a roll call, vote on us?
Sure.
Okay.
Commissioner Vines.
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez.
Aye.
Commissioner Benzoli.
Aye.
Commissioner Wong is absent. Commissioner Current.
Aye.
Vice Chair Moriarty.
Aye.
Chair Ben Willis.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Okay. Okay, moving on, the public hearing, so it looks like we don't have any. So go on to FO business, we don't have any. And new business, it's three-quarter specific plan. We talked about the other specific plans, and this time it's to talk about the APN Way corridor. This is informational discussion item reviewing the content of the city's adopted three-quarter specific plan with a focus on the APN Way corridor. So David, have at it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, again, as the commissioners were, we've been going over the specific plan. It's going over, you know, different corridors and kind of the, the plan in particular regarding all, all the different subjects and that they have. And now we've finally got the APN Way. Of course, as the commissioner's where we adopted this three-quarter specific plan in 2010. The specific plan, as it was developed, was to define the three major corridors within the city, which was APN Way, Pinot Valley Road, and San Pablo Avenue. And over the recent years, the influx of new planning commissioners led to the opportunity for staff to provide information sessions on the general plan in order to enhance commissioner and community member familiarity with the plan. And then similar information sessions were envisioned for the specific plan. So we started early in 2021. The city received five applications for large multifamily residential projects totaling approximately 618 units over the three corridors, with two of the projects located on the San Pablo Avenue corridor, two projects in APN Way corridor, and of course one along Pinot Valley Road. The committee, the commission met meeting on November 8th, highlighted the San Pablo Avenue corridor. And on the meeting on December 13th, 2021, you highlighted the Pinot Valley Road corridor. This report, again, as stated earlier, we're focusing on APN Way. Dave, do you have the PowerPoint? Thank you, yeah. Wow, okay, there we go, APN Way. And go to the next slide. Good, yeah, there we go. Of course, that's introduction to the city of Pinot, three quarters, just plan those. So the specific plan is governed by the California Government Code, the city of Pinot adopted ours, and of course, our three major corridors is San Pablo, APN, Pinot Valley Road. We go to the next slide, Dave. Kind of the vision for APN Way. Now, this is all out of the specific plan. And so basically, the, we, the vision for APN Way in 2010 was that it be a thriving retail service hub for the community region with new open space and gathering places and well-integrated circulation for pedestrians, bicyclists, and vehicles. That APN Way will provide opportunity for new and unique business and catalyst projects. That the APN Way corridor will continue to function as a primary north-south automobile around in the city while also providing more opportunities for pedestrians and cyclists. And of course, the improvement will be made along the corridor to enhance pedestrians. Additionally, pedestrian safety will be improved along APN Way from the junior high school across the IED interchange and within and around the APN Way shopping centers, which most of those centers would go down Fitzgerald, but we have the one shopping center that, that actually is off Fitzgerald, but it's within the APN Way corridor, and that's Pinot Vista Shopping Center. Commercial parking lots provide convenient and attractive locations to leave while walking to several destinations connected with the, hopefully, the well landscaped sidewalks and pedestrian corridors, and we're working on those. And of course, APN Way will serve as our regional gateway in Pinot. They have the IED interchange and also our southern city limit boundary with El Sobrante. These areas would benefit from a true landscaping, streetscape, including street trees, landscaping, median, street furniture, unique gateway monuments, innovative directional signage, and attractive street. So those are some of the, some of the things that, in terms of the vision of what we saw for APN Way. You go to the next slide, Dave. Basically, these are three corridors. We'll be talking about the one in yellow, APN Way. We've already typed San Pablo red and Pinot Valley in orange. So go to the next slide, Dave. Okay, so here we go, APN Way subarea framework. So basically, in our general, in our specific plan, there are basically three, three project areas within there. There's the corridor area, which is basically from, from San Pablo, that little corner, the little issue, the corner of San Pablo and APN Way. Then the corridor, which is all that, just the straight, street. And then, of course, it gets into our sub-service, service subarea, which is, of course, where Dr. Doc, Doctor Medical Side and Junior High, all the commercial along the other side of Man, Safeway Center on Terra Hills, as well as the Pinot Vista Shopping Center and those particular first set of fast food and banks on, on, on the, would be the north side of Fitzgerald. And of course, down into the mixed-use subarea, which just brought the, those are parcels up front, APN Way, all the way down to Delese, you're basing their southern boundary with El Sobrante. Okay, go to the next slide, please. These are the zoning designations. There's two hundred and fifty-five associated with, with this, with this corridor. We have the high-density residential, we've got the residential mixed-use, commercial mixed-use, the office professional mixed-use, and the, and the PQI, the public quasi-institutional, quasi-public. And of course, that's the junior high school, the CPMU. CPMU is the professional office corridor across the street from the Safeway Center. This, this, this shopping, this corridor has one special overlay, which is the high-density residential overlay, which is over the Safeway project with units between twenty point one and thirty-five units per gallon acre. So, and then the other, the other CMUs and RMUs are similar to what we have in the, in the, in the San Pablo Avenue corridor, as well as the Pinot Valley River. As you can see on the, on APN Way on the south end, which would be on your right, right end, you'll see most of the RDU, those are exist, most of those are existing, existing units. There might be some underutilized parcels there that are developed, but most of them have some type of building on them. There are a couple of vacant parcels throughout the area, but most of those are, most of those are really underutilized or have released one building on them. And of course, then we've got the high-density residential, the part of the complexes, condo projects towards the end, right there on Delese. I think that's how you say that. Said it wrong, please correct me, but. And Delese, in which there are some existing, multi-family units and a higher density, higher density use. You have the, you have in the, in the northern part, as you cross Highway 80, you see the two, the two, the brown next to the red, which is right across. That's the Doctor's Hospital side, it has a split zoning with the portion towards Man Street is commercial and is in the, or towards Canyon, I'm sorry, towards Canyon is the commercial. And of course, then it splits to the residential project. And we kind of talk about projects that are in our area. Okay, David, go ahead and go to the next slide. And remember, if you have any questions, please feel free to interrupt me and, and we can go over things and that. So basically, the urban design and circulation principles for APN Way, most of these are consistent with all the other corridors. That's the one thing about the specific plan, when it got into the designs and the, and those, they're very similar for all three corridors. And so, but with the APN Way, you know, they wanted to encourage a mixed use and complement and support one another. Of course, to support the diverse lanes by targeting mixed-use developments that attract additional residential, live-work, office, employment uses, with retail, restaurant, entertainment. Most of that area is built out, except for the area towards the south on, down APN, towards the southern portion of the plan. Enhance pedestrian circulation, improve safety in appropriate pedestrian crossings. So that's, we'd see we need to work with Caltrans on the bridge and do some safety, do some safety measures on going on that, talk to them about that. And I have already kind of started with Public Works due to a couple of projects that are coming our way in this corridor that are pretty big projects. So I've got to talk to this public person, we need to work with Caltrans on potentially doing some stuff there. Of course, improve auto circulation and reduce congestion, appropriate locations and crossings. We're working with Westcat, we're working with, you know, all the public transit agencies to help out. We're trying to get more connections to Bard and Westcat, even though on some portions of APN Way, Westcat took away a route that kind of took away APN Way. We're working with them with the projects that are being proposed and reinstating that line, at least to some, for some, at least some use or maybe bring half the route back or something where we can, you know, find more, more, you know, public transit. And of course, enhance connections between the neighborhoods, the bay, and other recreational activities. So we continue to try to make, make the community different, but the same, so to speak. So that's kind of what the specific plan does. If you go to the next slide, Dave. So again, parking and focal points, aesthetics. In this area, encourage John Street parking. That one, that one, that was a fall in from, from Pinot Valley Road. But we definitely are encouraging additional retail development and shopping center. There have been, even for the professional office across the street, they've been looking at potentially across from Safeway, looking at different, different uses for that property. And so this, our, our corridors are ever-changing. But our zoning and our, and our, and our subareas allow that to happen. So then again, it was the streetscape and landscape improvements, some gateway signage, some green spaces, public bars, distinctive decor, those types of things. And then establish consistency in street lighting, streetscape, furnishings, fixtures. So what we do in one corridor, we want to make sure we're doing them in the other corridor. That should be for Pinot, for Pinot Valley Road. And then, of course, that should be APN Way, I'm sorry. Encourage business reinvestment, which we are looking at different, even on APN Way, we're looking at different, different areas where we can add, add additional residential, where we need to add residential, and if there are more commercial needed, look at places to add commercial. Let's go to the next slide, Dave. Okay, and so this kind of gives you an idea of economics and land use. This, this metrics came right out of the specific plan, which basically the existing corridor, and I'll just go across the board. The existing corridor shows there are 244 residential units. There's 561,000 square feet of basically retail. There's 468,000 square feet of office, and there's a 48,352 in industrial. I don't know what that is on the APN corridor, but that's, that's, that's what it showed. In terms of proposing, what's being proposed? Of course, you can see they want to add additional 633 units or 877 residential units, averaging another 800,000 square foot of retail, office, another 728,000 square foot of office. And of course, they don't want, we don't want any really industrial within the APN Way corridor. So just kind of gives you an idea of what, what they plan for in the area. Now, we've got two residential projects that have cut into that 877 pretty good. And we'll talk about those as we get to the opportunity zones or the priority development areas within this, within this zone. But in terms of retail and office, so we've got to find another 246,000 square feet. Reserve potential, you start looking at different areas of the corridor. Go to the next slide, next page, Dave. So these are the priority development sites for the APN Way corridor. So the number one, of course, is the Safeway Center. And in terms of site information, that would be their site information on the far left. Number two, which is Doctor's Hospital Site, that is the site in the middle of information. And then number three, which is basically the CVS area. There's a CVS, and then there's some areas around the CVS that look, that has a CMU zoning as another priority area for, prior development area for the APN Way corridor. In terms of Safeway, of course, you know that we, we adopted the new Safeway plan, the, the new reconstruction of the Safeway, new Safeway coming in, new, new buildings, new commercial buildings. We're working with the developer to get that started. APN Village, which is on as priority development site number two, with 154,400 units. So we'll be on that. And of course, I, I have three, kind of with the new CVS, and we're working toward the other projects that would, that would build in that area. So there has been movement in this corridor, in these priority development areas, and we look forward to seeing those get, get built out and rebuilt. Okay, go to the next slide, Dave. Of course, this is one of the first projects is APN Way. We call it the APN Village, 2151 APN Way, multifamily project, 7.93 acres, about 345,000 square feet. And it's about 151, actually, yeah, it's 100, 150, should be 154 units, residential units. So those are 154. The landscape plan shows that how the building configuration is going to look. As you can see on the, on the top of the plan, you can see an entrance from APN, and you can see an entrance on Canyon on the left. And of course, then we've got some emergency access points that we worked with, with our fire department, additional spaces along, along APN Way. There's two other locations where they can come in from an emergency access standpoint. The, the below figure is kind of the, the mixed, mixed units and mixed buildings. It's a combination of mixed flats and condos, so stacked flats and condos. So all for sale with a 20% affordability factor, so for moderate income. So it, so that's, that's that project. Go to the next slide, Dave. And of course, this is the Terra Hills, 131577, the Safeway project, which basically has the new Safeway with this, with the center, and then, of course, the junior acre, and then the new fuel station and drive-through pad, and then the new sods. And the next is what, what they're planning on doing and how it will look with, with that project. So those are the two big projects in our area. Okay, go to the next slide, Dave. And that's it for APN, that's it for APN Way. I do want to say that in terms of, in terms of the staff report, I outlined kind of the development standards for APN Way that were similar to the tables that I did for Mobile Valley Road and the type of, of, in terms of setbacks, what, what kind of building types are allowed and parking, parking styles. So, yeah, so we've got those. And then, of course, the services of what, you know, where, where we're going in terms of the services, who provides what service in the APN Way corridor. And of course, the priority product of standard design guidelines. I pointed out the four that are pursuant, I mean, they're, they are, they're similar to what we're doing in APN Way. I mean, even, even with the renovation of existing buildings, most of those buildings are, I know are being torn down and restarted. But, uh, in the other areas of the, of the corridor, uh, there should, we should be able to just, uh, be able to modify some of the buildings to make some of the uses that are, that are being planned. So with that, uh, that's all I have. Want to take any questions or any comments or? Okay, go from there. Can you hear me okay? Yeah. So, um, I'm looking, taking some questions, so I'll start with Ann, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple, um, thank you very much for that presentation, um, having manager Hannah. Um, I guess a couple of questions is just what the status is of Pinal Square and of APN Village. So that we have kind of a, what are the dates moving out? Um, you know, just what we can expect when we'll see those, um, at, at one of our meetings. I know Pinal Square is seen to have several, um, delays and would just like to know where those are at.
Yeah, I, I can answer that. Uh, in terms of the status of Pinal Square, the, the owner is working with Safeway. There's, there's a couple of financial, uh, modifications that need to happen between the two entities to make, to make it work. Uh, they are, they want to start, they want to start building here, they, they want to start this year. Uh, so we're hoping that, and I'm, I'm in const, I've been in, last couple of weeks, I've been in contact with them to kind of get a schedule out from them, but I haven't been successful yet, but I'm still working on it. Uh, but I do know that they are working with Safeway right now. There's been some hitches after the, you know, with COVID and all that. Uh, there's just been some hitches in their, in their negotiations and so they're, they're working those, those issues out. In terms of APN Village, uh, hopefully being, bringing that to the commission, uh, at, at our second meeting, probably our second meeting in March. Uh, we had some issues, worked, that worked out with Westcat as part of their community benefit package, so we're, we're finalizing that. Uh, hopefully get that to the commission by the end of March, so that's, that's what we're looking for right now.
Excellent, okay, good, that's good to know, thank you. Um, and let's see, I know, um, at some point we'll, we'll be talking more about circulation and such, but, um, I think, I know we've all expressed a little bit of concern about, um, what can happen at that intersection. Um, the intersection of APN Canyon and Terran Hills. Um, and how that, how that will feed into, you know, the freeway and CVS and, and, you know, traffic coming in and out of, um, APN Village onto Canyon. Um, can you address where we're at as far as thinking about circulation at that intersection?
Yeah, I mean, we're taking a look at, we, we reviewed the traffic study or the traffic analysis that they submitted because they, they also did some comparison with, with the old doctor's hospital when it was running and, and what they did there. So there was some comparison that, or some, I don't say comparisons, but there's some, some analysis between the new and the, the new element and the, and the, and the old element, uh, they are, so those will all be ferreted out in the staff report in terms of what, what we're looking at and, and conditions regarding, uh, you know, what they, what they need to do for improvements and, and those types of things, so.
Okay, and that, in, in addition, I know that Commission of Current has always been concerned about with the Pinal Square project and the, the new, um, fuel station there and how that might affect that whole, um, intersection, so.
Yeah.
I'll let him follow up on some specific questions about that if, if he chooses to do so.
Okay.
I did have some questions regarding bike pit stuff on, in this corridor. I know, um, can you help us understand what the, the status is of the Hawk intersection, uh, at Morlesta?
Uh, from my understanding is, from my understanding on that project, uh, they are, I think we're doing a full signal there. Uh, I don't know, I, I can find out for you what the status is on that in terms of if they're in design or if they're in, uh, or where they're at with that, with that project. So, um, so I'm not, I'm not quite sure. But I know that we do have traffic improvements proposed there, I, they are in the capital improvement plan and they got put in the capital improvement plan. So that's something that we can take a look at and just see what the status is.
That'd be great, if we could have an update on that, um, next time, um, that, that would be helpful. And just because I know that the folks in those neighborhoods have been concerned for a long time. That's a pretty dangerous area. Um, I guess the other, uh, question that I have is, uh, also regarding bike pit is on the south end of, of this, you know, corridor. Um, the county did a whole bike lane redo of the entire road. And the second you hit the Pinal City limits, it all disappears.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so it's, it's again, you know, welcome to Pinal, where the bike lanes go to die. And it's, I'm, I'm concerned about that and I'd like to know if there's been any discussion, um, at least at staff level, um, about, you know, that lock, it, it gets a dangerous as you get towards Fitzgerald and such, it's really dangerous on a bike. And so for, we want to encourage people to ride their bikes, um, yeah, so.
Well, we, we don't have the full build out of the right of way of APN through there, but there's sort of really no sidewalks and all that type of stuff. And so we've taken a look at where, where we need to go with, um, with our sidewalks and our bike lanes on that, along that stretch. I know if, if, if new development comes in, of course, then we've got the ability to extract conditions or improvements through that. So anything we do now would have to be, you know, we'd have to probably extend the right of way with the bike lane in at this point, uh, to do it safely. They have a shoulder, they have a shoulder and that. So we've kind of, we've talked about it, but there hasn't been really a lot of, uh, for better lack of term, of development interest in that area, uh, at least not from a, from a major standpoint that would, that could put in swaths of that. So we would have to take a look at either some grant funding or something to, as a plan to, to put that in. Um, and so the, but we've talked, we've talked about that. I mean, there's been some transportation policies coming down from, from MTCT or MTC and ABA that we're working with, uh, with on that and how, how to get grant money for some of these projects, uh, when we don't have a BART station or a ferry or something like that. So, uh, we're going to be competing hard for that, uh, to get some policy changes there that they're proposing. And so that we can qualify for some grant money. So that's probably the only way at this point we're going to be able to do it. Uh, unless we have, unless we have a, a development that can come through and, and, and put it in.
Okay, so I mean, it is a, it is supposed to be a right, right to BART. Um, that whole, you know, as APN Way heads towards, um, the, the down road. Um, it's kind of, kind of crazy, but I mean, maybe leveraging that somehow, um.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do something, yeah, I mean, we'll have, we haven't really put a strategy together yet for, we're still, we're still trying to get, you know, all of us on the same page, because we've got two new members, two new department heads, and then you got Misha and I. So we're, we're trying to put all our heads together to see what kind of the, what we're going to need to do for that area, that, especially that area. Because we know that that area hasn't seen, uh, the light of day for a while in a sense. And there's a lot of underutilized parcels down there that could be put together and put in some, some nice developments, uh, whether residential or commercial, just because of the land, the way the land, the city. So, yeah, I mean, we're, we are looking at, and then different way to know how to attack the funding. Because it seems like what's happening now is it's really going towards all of those places that have the seventy to a hundred percent, they're seventy to seventy-five to a hundred unit, dwelling units to the acre. Uh, they've got bar stations, they've got ramps, they've got fifteen minute headways. So we're looking, we're trying to get some policies in there. Um, well, let's put it this way, the set of policies that are in there now, the city has a better fighting chance because it's pretty vague in terms of what all that is. They're getting much more specific and they're getting much more, which then leads, leads to push us out a little bit because we don't have a lot of those things that qualify for some of this funding. So we're trying to amend some pol, we're trying to get some policy work done that would help us, allow us to get some grants for, you know, even us little cities out here in, in, in the west county. You know, we, we, we need bike lanes and we need bus routes and we need those types of things. And, and so if you're not going to give us routes, then you're, you need to give us some money so that we can build some, you know, do some bike routes and get those, get back ones. So still trying to put together a strategy on how we're going to attack that, to be honest, so.
Just, just to make sure I understood, you said that the, the language right now is vague enough and we have more of a chance of here to apply for grant funding and such now as opposed to later, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the reason, and well, the reason why that is, is that it's not that, it's because they want to identify those areas, the bar areas, the ferry areas, the fifteen head, the fifteen minute head times with the buses and identify all those areas, which they, which they have identified, but because of the language, now, now they're tying all the funding to that. So if you're not in one of those categories, you could be pushed out, right? So depending on what tier you're in. And so we, we've, we've kind of worked, because they tiered it up to tier one, tier two, tier three. But we're thinking that they need to add a tier four for those cities like us that are out here in, out here in the west county. There are other cities I know that have the same issue, but they don't have fifteen minute headways, they don't have, you know, they don't have, uh, they don't have seventy-five to the hundred unit per dwelling unit acres, they don't have a park station, they don't have a, you know, Caltrans station, they, you know, so. It, it's just one of those things where you, you gotta play the game to get the, to get the money, it's like a shell game. And so bigger cities are, are winning out, at least right now, at least what they're trying to do, what they're trying to pull, so. Uh, but we'll, we'll continue to, continue to fight for that funding, so. This is, it's our life, it's, you know, we have, we have funding already, like, like our bridge, like the Oback funding we used for the bridge. Uh, we've got other things that we use for the brick, for other monies that we need. So it's just, we don't get a whole lot of it like the other cities do. So we've got to either figure out a strategy on how to get it, or we're just gonna have to build, 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 build up the money as fast as we can over like a five, ten year period, then bullet ball in one shot. So it, it's, it's always tough when you're dealing with these bigger cities and you've got to, you've got to negotiate your, your way in and around, so. But we're still working on it.
Okay, well, we encourage you to do that, so.
Yeah, definitely, definitely.
And then just the last question I had, I know that I believe it was Christian or Wong who had brought this up before. If I see that, um, Fitzgerald is considered, I mean, currently is part of the APN corridor, but he had suggested and it was received very positively by, you know, the rest of the commission, that Fitzgerald become its own corridor?
Mm-hmm.
Um, has there been, you know, what, what might we need to do to, to pursue, um, that extra change?
That's something that Lily and I are talking about, uh, and if, or if, you know, because if Fitzgerald becomes its own corridor, then, then the place, you know, we've got the portion of it that's on APN, so we've got to take it, we've, we've got to somehow make sure that we, we probably redefine as another corridor name just because Fitzgerald is, but we're, we're working on that and what, what we want to see, what we want to see out there, so. Uh, because there's a lot of changes in how shopping centers are operating, there's a lot of changes on how, I mean, I look at like Art Fair Mall in Sacramento, I mean, they're pretty much blowing it up, blowing it up and starting all over again. And they're, you know, they're adding some residential components to that, they're, they're doing some other things. And so a lot of the centers are starting to do that, so that's, you know, we're kind of waiting and seeing how those kind of turn out just, just from a policy perspective. Because that's how, what we'd have to do to amend our specific plan, we'd have to create a whole policy, uh, a whole policy document that goes along with that. And so, um, you know, and we would do, I mean, once we would start that process, of course, we do the public outreach, we do everything because it's, it's our community and we want to see, see what it is there. Uh, but we want to kind of, we want to kind of see what some of these cities are doing first, just to kind of see, see what they're doing and maybe that we might be able to grow something or, you know, or so, or if there's something we don't like that we, that we might, we might have put in, but it doesn't work well for us, so that's, so we're kind of, kind of awaiting and see on the Fitzgerald corridor issue. But, um, and right now there's really been no, there's been no, uh, I mean, it's all, it's, it's pretty much built out. I mean, there's, so unless they, you know, bulldoze some buildings and rebuild it, you know, we think it's pretty much going to stand the way it looks at least for a while, so it gives us a little bit of time to really think about what we want to do out there and how, and how we want that to look in the next twenty-three years.
But we're talking about the Pinal Vista project, right? I mean, that's going to have a huge impact on that whole corridor.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, but, but that project's within the APN Way corridor, it's not within the Fitzgerald corridor, so. Why wouldn't it be a Fitzgerald corridor? So.
Yeah, so, so wait, because it's a, I'm talking about the old Kmart.
Yeah, so it's in the APN Way corridor.
Right, currently, but if, if it was to change to be a, a Fitzgerald corridor, that would be part of that?
Potentially, or we just, or we just leave the Pinal, you know, that's what, that's the other thing is, because if we try to redo the APN Way corridor in that area, because it doesn't only affect them, it affects everyone across the street. So there, you know, we, again, there has to be some serious, there have, we have to really take a look at policies and, and stuff that what we're doing by either taking them out or leaving them alone and creating our, our own Fitzgerald corridor, uh, that goes from Best Buy around the corner, slow speed to the freeway. So, um, so yeah, so there, there's, it's, it's not just, I mean, there's a lot of policy stuff that we would have to take a look at, uh, to, to make that happen, so. Um, and we're still kind of just, is this something, do we want to take that on? I mean, we've got projects right now in APN Way corridor, there's no way it's going to change Fitzgerald in, in time for this. I mean, Pinal Vista is coming, be coming to you guys fairly soon, the next couple of months. I mean, this thing to put a corridoring plan together and that, it would take us probably about at least twenty-four to thirty-six months. By the time we do all the public outreach, by the time we get, you know, someone on board to write it, uh, and what we want, we want it to, we want that area to look like. So it'll take some time, so. So right now, right now, APN, Pinal Vista would be in the APN Way corridor for.
All right, so, so, so that stays that, but I mean, if, if any of the other commissioners have any other memory or thoughts about that idea, I just remember it as being something that was favorably received.
Oh yeah, no, definitely.
And now, you know, thinking, like, if, yeah, so, so if anyone else wants to, any other comments to others such. But other than that, um, I don't have any, any other thoughts at, at the moment, so thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions or comments?
You on thirteen?
Yeah, Adam, can you hear me?
Barely.
Okay, I was just saying, Adam, but if you have any questions or comments.
Okay, so Adam, you're up next.
Yeah, I did, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, I didn't hear you do the turn. Uh, I have a couple of quick questions. Um, one was, was there a vision of how they got to those kind of goal numbers for residential and the retail? Was there like a math or is it just?
Yeah, no, they did. No, I pulled all of that out of the econo, they did, in the very back of the plan, uh, there's an economic, they did some matrix and stuff regarding that and that's kind of where they, where they got the numbers from.
Okay. Um, and where is that, I'm actually kind of curious about the industrial portion, now where actually is that?
I, 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 to be honest, I'm not quite sure where it is. I mean, they, there is no O I, there is no O I M U in there, so I'm not sure that there, there might have been some industrial lands in there somewhere, I, I don't know. Um, uh, yeah, I was kind of shocked when I saw that as well, because that's about ten acres. That's about that forty-eight thou, four hundred, forty-eight thousand square feet, that's, well, that's about an acre. Three thousand square feet, yeah, that's a little more than an acre. So I don't, I don't know where that is, unless it's a, unless it's a cell site somewhere in there, um, uh, which could be like where the Verizon site is, could be sitting on, even though it's on the.
Oh.
So that's where, that's where I'm thinking it is, but, um, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I was curious, I was, I was curious why they didn't try to go for it to decrease the amount of industrial space in that corridor in the negative. Just trying to keep it as, as a flat, net zero.
Yeah.
Um, and did I hear that there's a project to redo the bridge over APN?
No, not over APN, no, it's over off of, uh, it's off of, it's on San Pablo, the, the bridge between Hercules and, uh, Pinal.
Okay, but the one that's over APN is that, is there Caltrans plan to, to upgrade that or change that out?
No, that's, no, we're, we're trying to work, we're trying to work with Caltrans on maybe getting some safety measures on there since we're adding, since we're adding some more residential units in the corridor that they do some safety stuff, uh, on, you know, at the bridges.
Okay, oh, we don't really have any influence over that, that is, that's part of their overall capital plan as projects come and go?
Yeah, pretty much.
All right.
We can try to push things forward, but in most cases, it's sad, it. It's sad to say what has to happen for for them to move on something, so.
Yeah.
But uh, but uh, yeah, so that's something we've got to, got to work on with them.
It can, it just seems original to the very original.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, thanks for the presentation, I didn't have any other questions.
Okay.
Okay, uh, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can do you now, Tim.
Okay, um, Rafael, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I had a few questions, let's see. How many of them I can recall at this point, so going back a bit of the slides, there was a bit talking about. Transit connections in Westcat, and I know that the last city council meeting was brought up that Westcat. Had just turned from BART, there's going to be a significant funding cut in the funds that BART provides for connectors. Due to some reason, it wasn't quite clear at the time, just what exactly was going on with that, is there? Any information we have on that or how it would impact sort of the public transit portion of the three corridor specific plan?
Well, we have, we have, of course, we have two lines that, the J P X lines that come through the Apian Way, uh, come through. Ter, ter, uh, no, Apian Way and Fitzgerald that that you can get on, that takes you to the, that takes you to the BART. So, um, and Bridge Home from BART, so those would be the routes that would be most impacted with that. So we're, we are proposing some improvements uh, to those those routes. We haven't, um, we haven't heard. You know, they've already cut one route in Penole, which was Route eighteen, which actually is the route that goes in front of the Doc, uh, the Apian Village project. So we're not sure, but because they are doing some big improvements to, in Hercules, uh, I think. They're getting a station or they're getting something, uh, that the routes between Penole and. Basically Richmond where they get on so that they go to the park station from from us, I I think we should be okay, um, but um. But other than that, I haven't heard really anything, so it's just our projects and working with Westcat to try to get. If there are improvements that are needed for the transit or additional routes or that kind of stuff to work with them on that.
And then my next question was, I've heard some concerns towards the community at. Various meetings over some elements of. The specific plan in particular, uh, building height requirements permitting up to six stories of height in the. Service some area of the Apian project. Of Apian in particular, which is apparently an area of concern for some people with regards to the. Penole Shores project, I think he said it was, the one that's replacing the Kmart. There was some concern raised that our existing fire equipment might not be able to adequately serve a six story high building. And then with regards to the Apian Village project, it looked like that was. Basically two separately zoned chunks, one that was residential and one that was commercial mixed use. So how would basically combining two separate lots under different zoning impact having basically one. Residential only project, does it create any issues or is the commercial mixed use just converted into residential as part of the project? How does that work?
Now, basically, we'll answer the first question regarding the the fire apparatuses. That's something that we'll review at the fire department when this project comes in, so there. The project is required to pay mitigation measure fund or mitigation fees, so. There could be some, there there's some negotiation there with to be able to. Particularly to potentially, you know, buy apparatus or do those types of things, so that's something that we're continually working with. With developers in 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 total, so, um, in terms of the height requirement. Yeah, there are most of, most of those, the height requirement is in the service areas. Uh, we can go as high as seventy feet, that's just the way, that's what the plan called for. Uh, knowing that they knew that with new projects comes mitigation, so they. They, my, my assumption is that they knew that there would be conditions of approval that would require development to. Acquire equipment or to buy equipment or to pay additional uh, mitigation fees for that, for that equipment. So that, so that's why from from a, from a planning standpoint, that's not a, you know. Usually those aren't deal breakers, and so that's why they were to go high, and yet the the other thing was for parking. Because most of the, most of those style units would need maybe a floor or two of parking. So and based on the limited amount of land that we have, instead of building the product. Like in most cities, we really build the property, the parking lots out, this time we have to build them up, so there are some additional. And with the mixed uses, so if there's a commercial use or residential use on a same building, you want additional parking, so I mean, that's. That's kind of some of the logic that went into that, in the, just specifically in those service areas. Uh, where you have potential, you could have potentially both commercial and residential uses. So the second, the second part of your question regarding the commer, seeing the two zones on Apian Village. The commercial mixed use does, does allow for a hundred percent residential in the specific plan, as long as they meet. The community benefits, as long, as long as they provide community benefits as described in the general plan. So they have to go through the the community benefits portion of the general plan to then. You know, what part of this, you know, what does it, you know, do for the community as a whole? And then that has to be uh, looked at as part of their C M U portion of their project. So, so it's just another add, another addition that they had to do. So it goes, and they didn't want to rezone the property at the time, and so because of the one hundred percent. Because C M U does allow for a hundred percent residential. As long as you provide the community benefits is consistent with the general plan.
Okay, and then with regards to sort of this is. Going to broader stuff, I was looking at the overall specific plan, I noticed on. Page two hundred eighty six of the twenty ten specific plan and private room design guidelines seven point zero dash ten. Fencing, it says the use of chain link fabric or concrete block fencing is prohibited. Just in general, but you often see chain link fencing up around buildings that are basically. Dilapidated, off limits, whatever, they just put up chain link fencing blocking off, but it says in here and the. That it's basically not allowed, so how's that work? Is it an exemption to the specific rules, is it allowed because it's? Outside of the ordinary planning process because afterwards things is built, what's the deal with that?
Well, let's like, like for example, with Apian Village, once that, once, once that work project is built, that that chain link will go away, right? So in in the case of that, because it's a dilapidated building, the city required, this is when it was making waves. The buildings were being dilapidated, so we required that they put some fencing around, protective fencing around the the project. Um, and so in that case, it was more of a safety issue, which chain link and that is provided. What they mean by the the other type of fencing, with development projects, those style of fencing aren't allowed. So you can't have block walls, you can't have chain link, you can't have, you know, whatever, you have to have a different style of fencing. Uh, than those, but in terms of like with, or safety precautions that they can bring in chain link. Uh, to protect it, and that's true, that's what they did, but. They probably wouldn't have been there if making waves would have continued through their process, that chain link would have been gone a long time ago, because they would have been in. And building and that kind of stuff, so. And and then in the case where we have chain link, in most cases for safety purposes. The villains are baked in and we need to, we need to get them out of there, that thing.
Okay, so it's allowed to have chain link just as long as it's not, you know, part of the initial design of the product, but as a safety measure instead.
Yeah, yeah.
And then with regards to table number two, the existing versus proposed development projections, I'm assuming that. Because to the best of my understanding, all of the housing on the Safeway site was eliminated, that it's basically been replaced by. The increased housing at Apian Village and the Penole Vista and various other places, the housing basically shifted out to other sites, and that's why we're still at. Plus six thirty three units, and I'm sort of curious though as to how we're getting plus roughly two hundred fifty thousand. Square feet of retail and office space given the relatively built out nature. Of the area, you think you're sacrificing one or the other as you're building out more residential uses?
Well, there, the the, the idea was that those properties would get more dense. So in terms of your floor air, in terms of your floor area ratio, there you go, like, you you might have point two five. You know, floor area ratio, but if you had a seven story building that adds, you know, additional, you know, thousands, you know, ten thousand, fifty thousand. Square feet per floor or whatever, so I think that's where they're getting the additional office and. And commercial is that they're building bigger buildings. On small, on on the newer pieces of land, like for example, Ter, uh, for example, Safeway. Uh, the original Safeway in C V S is, was approximately sixty five thousand and. Maybe about eighty five thousand, eighty, eighty five thousand square feet between the two buildings. Well, now that process after it's all built out, so now a hundred and five to a hundred and ten thousand square feet. So we just increased the commercial square footage by, you know, by thirty thousand square feet. Uh, so it's mainly, it, when they were doing those numbers, it was basically, there's a lot of basic floor area ratio that was calculated in. And there's a lot of underutilized parcels like down towards the southern edge of, after you get past Fitzgerald. All those properties are commercial mixed use properties all the way down since, basically to the city limits. If you're going south, everything on the right side. Or the, would be the, what the west side of of Apian is pretty much all commercial mixed use, so. There's a lot of parcels there that could be built up of more, add additional square footage in terms of commercial or office. Uh, than what's existing right now, so. And and also the residential mixed use can have up to forty nine percent commercial. So even the residential mixed use, so they were figuring that, you know, again, bigger buildings. Our buildings within the service area, higher floor or or tighter floor ratios, and that gave you the additional. Double hundred thousand square, the the particular plant use. That's what I'm assuming, when they put it together.
Alright, so I think that's all my questions for the moment, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Frankie, do you have any questions?
I do, thank you, Chris, um, Chair, uh. Dave, um, I guess, um, what I'd like to know is. Are we working with our staff to look at options of vertical upsizing? And and I'd say that because as we continue to face this housing crisis that we're in right now across the state. I'm sure we're gonna see more developers continue to come to us, right, with these tight, you know, we we do have some plots of land that are still out there. So is anybody on your team, have you, are we working at looking at um, increasing the density by going with vertical upsizing today?
Yeah, it's part of our, well, just to let you know, we start, we kicked off our housing element process, so. Uh, we'll be talking a lot about that in terms of, you know, becoming, you know, and and just to let you know, our. Our arena number, which is our regional housing needs allocation, went from two hundred ninety seven to five hundred units. Now over an eight year, eight year period, which was probably in the next, within the next eight year period in twenty thirty one going on, I'm sure that number's gonna be a whole lot bigger. Uh, and we'll already have some of these projects hopefully built out by then. And so we'll have to, we'll have to create additional spaces to be able to handle all those units, so. Right now, our housing element, we we have the capacity to build four hundred ninety seven units, even though our arena number was two hundred ninety seven. We had, based on our zoning, based on our zoning, based on sites, based on those type of things, we had the capacity. To put in an additional probably two hundred units, and so when we minus the one twenty five from uh, from. Uh, from Safeway, we still have more than enough. Allegation, uh, space and within the, within our area to accommodate for the two hundred ninety seven units in our housing element.
Okay.
Now we're up to five hundred, right, well, we just got in six hundred units within the last four months, so. And they're all moderate, they're all, they range the full gamut of of that, and one of the buildings, it exceeds probably the height, which is Penole Vista. The others are all within, or I think Vista Woods, uh, went over, they, I think their height, the height was highest was like. Fifteen, I think it was like fifty four feet because of the length of the land and the four stories and with the additional parking underneath. So, yeah, we are definitely taking, like, more vertical, more vertical projects, especially in some of the corridors where they're, it's pretty built out. Especially on the San Pablo corridor, I mean, it's.
Right.
There's, most of those are gonna go up, I mean, there's that. And uh, but those, but those will also be, we'll also be talking about all that during our housing element, so. During our public workshops and doing, and we're just getting all that kicked off, so we'll have a lot more discussion on how we're going to handle. You know, those types of projects, so.
Okay, thank you for that thoughtful response there, the next one, uh. Series of questions are regarding Penole Square, they, as you know, we've been, we're, we've, this has been going on for a number of years, so. Um, is everything locked in in terms of the design? And the reason for that question is, Dave. Um, some of the views off of that property are multi-million dollar views. And it's interesting that Safeway would take what is in essence the long side of it, put the Safeway on that side. I would think if everything's not locked in, we we might want to consider swapping Safeway to. What would be the left, if you're facing it, the left side instead of the right.
Right.
And then using the right side for something like, uh, retail for something like BJ's. Now, a company like BJ's could do a two story with a third story deck for eating outside. Um, and that would, if something like that were on the I eighty corridor, Dave, you're looking at tax. Um, revenues coming into the city from a BJ's, which would come directly into our coffers of about two million dollars. Conservatively, one million, but more likely two million plus, which would then give us money to fund. You know, that extra gap that we have on the bridge going from Penole to Hercules, that two plus million dollars. It's those sort of things where, are we working with the developers to help them thoughtfully arrange those parcels?
Well, that project, I mean, Penole Square, I mean, that that project was, I mean, that project was started in two thousand seventeen, that project, uh. When I got here at the end of two thousand nineteen, beginning of two thousand twenty twenty, uh, it was about, it it was pretty much, the design was pretty much locked in. The only thing that's not locked in right now, and Ed will know this, is the landscaping, because we're working with them on the landscape plan. To create additional, more, more native trees within the project, so. That's the only part of the project that's kind of locked, that's not locked in at this point. Uh, but everything else is pretty much locked in, I mean, they did create a space, like a public open space. Uh, within, within, uh, doesn't mean they can't come back and modify their anchor, their junior anchor, which is at the end of the. Which is on the I A B side, actually, so if there is a, if there is a potential for like that type of development, that would, I mean, as you say, have a. They've got a decent sized building on the other end to be able to handle that. Uh, so, because that's their junior anchor, their junior anchor is like about twenty five, twenty six thousand square feet on that end. On that area gap, so, uh, if they were to do that, I don't, the, um. That part, uh, I I, we've talked to them about doing some different stuff, uh, up there, a little, just a little bit. Uh, but they're, they're just working on their tenant, their tenant scope right now and getting their spaces. So, uh, we'll see, we'll see where it goes, but they could mod, if they wanted to come in and modify it to do that, they have the ability to do that, they'd have to come back with permission. Uh, for like an admin designer view or another designer view to, uh. To make that happen, so.
Okay, and then a follow on on that is, we've discussed that they wanted to put, um, the gas station in. Are we also putting a requirement for E D charging stations, Dave?
They have, they, they are putting, they do in the parking lot, not necessarily, uh. Not necessarily the fueling station, but there is, uh, I think they're putting in sixteen to eighteen spots. Uh, which is more than anybody else anywhere. So, yeah, they are, they are looking at putting in E D spots throughout their, throughout their development. And I think the number is sixteen, I'm not positive, but they'll be, all those spaces will be wired. Uh, and they were the first really people to to really suggest me to that, uh, so they'll have conduit for all their hundred, I think we got, I don't know how many. Parts of the space they have, a couple hundred, uh, all be wired to do, uh, and I think they're putting in sixteen. That that number seems to keep, keeps popping up in my head.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dave, and then, uh, Leslie, I wanted to thank you and city staff. For everybody that worked on the senior housing on San Pablo Avenue. I, um, happened to drive past that this last week, and I was happy to see that they started work on that, so. I really, um, I'm I'm really grateful that you guys really got that one together and really helped them out getting that done.
That was a, that was a big one, that was, uh, that, that, we really had, but I, I, in fact, I'm glad you kind of brought that up. Because I have to laugh, because now that planning's done, but now they're in the buildings portion of it, and building kind of, I didn't want to say they were laughing at us. And all the stuff that we had to do to help these guys get through the process, now they're having to have to do that, so now we're looking at them and say. It's it's your turn in the gauntlet, my friends, so have fun with that, uh, now with this, yeah, we're glad they've gotten started, uh. And, uh, and I've got some uh, updates on some of the other projects too, so I'll let you know about those later.
Okay, and then kind of a follow on on that particular project that's going in. Um, Dave, is there any way to make sure, um, I think I brought this up before, um, but maybe not, I just want to make. I just wanna make sure that somebody's looking at putting a stoplight to help those old folks get across San Pablo. So whether that's on Fifth or Roval or somewhere in there, that in our CIP that we're looking to ensure that we have, um, the funding in place to safely get those folks across the street.
Yeah, I've got, I'm working with Nish on that, uh, seeing what we can do, what we can do. So, yeah.
Cause I think, what, a stoplight's usually about a million dollars? Does that sound about right?
Yeah, and depending on, you know, and you don't want, you know, there's always this argument about having them too close and to having them too close together along, you don't get the good, you know, and, and San Pablo is a regional roadway, so we're gonna try to keep it flowing and not blah, 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 blah. So, yeah, I mean, but we're taking a look at that, what we can do with that, with that intersection, uh, as well. So, um, that's something that we're, we're working on. And I, I don't, I'm not quite sure what's in the capital improvement for that. I think right now it's more of a lighted sidewalk, um, where you press the button and it lights up, um, but I'm not positive. I have to go back and look to see what's, see what's in there.
Okay. Thank you so much. That, um, concludes the questions I had, and appreciate your response.
You're welcome.
And, uh, Dave?
Dick. Okay, already now. Um, you know, I, I really don't have too many things to say, but I will make the comment that, um, you know, when we developed this, um, corridor plan well over a decade ago, um, I'm really amazed at how it's kind of falling into place the way we thought it would. Uh, specifically with the idea that shopping centers were gonna be opportunities for housing. Now, we had put the overway in the Safeway, uh, shopping center, cause, uh, the, the thought there was that, uh, you know, it would be easier to build three or four-story buildings, uh, in that area. Um, uh, but we never anticipated that Kmart would be a better opportunity, so it's safe for that. We did a pretty good job of it, and we also looked at the, uh, doctor's hospital, and at the time there was, uh, believe it or not, uh, some thought about putting a Home Depot there. So that's why it's, why we allow for the commercial space, um. But I think we envisioned that, that there would be housing there pretty much like was being proposed, um, you know, that would be coming before us. Um, and I wanna mention, Anne mentioned that I have thoughts about the Terragills, Apian, um, corridor, uh, or intersection, and, you know, I, I, I think I've kind of said what I have to say about it. I just think there's a real bottleneck in that, um, you know, that everybody, most people, ninety percent of people turning right from Terragills onto Apian, uh, whether they're going on the freeway east or on the freeway west or going through, they all seem to go to that curb lane, and it, and the, uh, the second turn lane is very underutilized, and it creates real issues when the, uh, the people are making a turn, they have to merge into the other lane if they're going straight or whatever. And I've always been saying that maybe just a simple paint job there, like we have on, uh, Penole Valley Road there by a freeway where we say, um, you know, where we say, you know, have things saying I- eighty west, I- eighty east, you're supposed to be in this lane.
Right.
Uh, you know, I, I'm not really proposing, but I think there's a real major change, but just sort of like looking at that intersection. Um, and, uh, also I think the thing that we kind of missed in doing the, uh, uh, the corridor was setting the boundaries to include the, uh, the newest part of it, um, you know, the, 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 um, I guess it's the southern end, uh, of it, um. Cause we, there's really no reason why we shouldn't have extended it to the, uh, um, you know, the Penole boundary. Although I think at the time, I'm not sure if that was, uh, part, to me might be, be able to relate on that. I'm not sure when we were looking at that, whether we had to, um, do a little, some boundary changes there to get that into Penole. Uh, I'm not sure if that was the case or not, I don't think so, but, um, I know that the, um, you know, I, I, I don't know what the reason was why we just didn't extend it there, cause it would've made a lot of sense to do that. And, um, I think Frankie brought up the idea of, of a bigger height, you know, that we need to go start in vertical. Um, I think the biggest issue there is the public acceptance. Um, and, um, as we're, you know, forced to make, uh, half higher buildings by the, you know, by the, uh, that we're seeing because of the state law, where we are gonna have three, four, even five-story buildings coming into the city. Uh, maybe the public resistance to that will, will go down to where we can start thinking about vertical. Uh, I think the biggest waste in, in this, the Bay Area is the fact that we don't, you know, like, look at the Arinda and Mafia, uh, bar stations, and nobody's, you know, the, the bar's complaining about the lack of, uh, people on the, uh, you know, passengers, and I see it, you know, this isn't, you know, obviously involved in all, but I just see, you know, for the last thirty years, I've been kind of harping about how those cities need to have more affordable housing. And I think there's a perfect opportunity to build some nice seven, six, or eight, or even ten-story, uh, complexes, uh, on those empty parking spaces, like, kinda like what El Cerrito did. Uh, although that wasn't really bar property, but, you know, I think that's, that's an excellent place to have, uh, you know, housing. Uh, cause, uh, there you got, you know, probably a thousand people, customers who take a bar that don't drive at all. Uh, you know, and, um, it solves the housing problem, it, it's, you know, selling that, uh, bar couldn't cover its two billion dollar shortfall, maybe a reasonable part of it, and, uh, we start getting affordable housing. So, you know, I just think that, I agree with you Frankie, I think the future is bright. Um, and, uh, I think that's about it, you know, uh, again, I think that, you know, I think we're gonna have to look, uh, as a city at redoing the general plan and the, uh, the three corridors plan, because a lot has happened since, uh, you know, fifteen years ago when we started work, working on this, you know, developed the plan.
Right.
So, uh, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Um, it's funny that you mentioned that, with the bar station thing, when I was in, in school, there was a competition amongst the graduate students where, uh, along the West Coast, where they, uh, took a bar station and they designed a development pretty much over the parking lots. And the one that Berkeley had was the Arinda Bar Station, and they did do a couple of layers of parking over probably six or seven-story high-rise apartments. And I don't remember at the time that they considered that affordable housing or not, cause it would've been, you know, cost a fortune if you were living in Arinda and something like that. But, um, there were several ideas, and this is back in the, um, you know, early eighties, where people weren't even thinking about what we're dealing with now. And, um, so it was very interesting with the things that came out of that, they all were high-rise type things, and there are things planned, some of the more urban bar stations where there are gonna be more high-rise developments, and we've seen places like in Waukabunga makes, that they did, they made some pretty big, a big parking structure and, uh, a lot of housing around there now. So that's definitely starting to come around, you know, it took, you know, twenty, thirty years for it to come around, but it's, it's starting to happen.
Yeah, I, 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 I hope so, Tim, you know, I mean, I've been on, I've been in this planning thing for well over thirty years, you know, I've been on LAFCO, I've been in the, the citizens, uh, uh, advisory committee, and the transportation, and of course, now in the planning. So I, you know, it always gets to be that the people in Arinda and Mafia, I mean, they are just so, they're, they're well-financed, and they fight everything that has to do, cause they kinda consider affordable housing happening in Pittsburgh or Richmond or Penole or whatever, and somehow they wanna keep their, their area, you know, they're guarded about what goes in their area, and that's, it, it's probably gonna take the state to overcome that resistance, and I think that's happening. I think that, uh, you know, that the, uh, uh, the Attorney General of the State has made it real clear that he plans to, uh, take lawsuits against those communities which are not participating and providing housing. Uh, I just hope that happens, because there's, it's, it, there's no reason why we should have bar stations with now people able to walk to it.
Yeah, and there's a lot of, a lot of that going on now in terms of the development that's happening. Um, unfortunately, in some places, because of the, uh, the attraction to that, or of how, of new housing around bar stations, some of the older housing that's there that might be like a few blocks away has skyrocketed in, in costs. And now people that used to live there are getting forced out for people that, you know, work at, I think there's someplace like in, uh, Milquitas in San Jose where they were, they're getting kicked out essentially from people who are working at Facebook and Google that could afford much higher rates, so it's, so not only are some of these, uh, housing that should've been, uh, affordable, the housing that was there already that was affordable is no longer affordable.
Yeah.
And that's happening a lot, cause a lot of these developers now, they all think everybody works at Google and Facebook. And so, uh, getting, getting affordable housing is, is a real chore. Yeah, especially with the occupancy development, where people used to get incentives for doing that, and now those are gone, and so there's no point to, uh, to do, for them to do that, cause it won't, you know, pencil out those things.
Well, that's, that, that's the beauty of building on the bar blocks, and of course, you're kind of outside our jurisdiction here talking about that. Um, but the, the bar blocks are already, uh, public, uh, property, you know, there's no cost associated. And actually, I think this has to do with Penole, because what we're seeing is the fact that we're, we're, we're kind of like, you know, we have six hundred and eighteen units, uh, that are being built in, uh, on the corridors, a lot of that is affordable housing with, uh, real compromises as far as parking and height limits go because it's affordable housing. And I kinda resent the fact a little bit, I, first of all, I wanna, you know, say we need the housing, so I'm not against it, you know, but the fact is, I wanna see full participation of the, all the jurisdictions in the county. And I look at the, uh, law on the corridor there as, as being not part of the solution. And they need, they, they have to stop, uh, making other jurisdictions build the housing, especially when we don't have the transportation. They have the transportation. And they should be, we should see, uh, we should see high-rises around those bar stations.
And we probably will.
Yeah.
At, at the same time, I'm not too sold on whether we, I wanna see high-rises in Penole. Um, I like the, the, the size of the things we've seen so far are, are pretty good. Uh, but I think we would have to be really careful how that, these things turn out. Um, I would not wanna have housing just kinda done because, because, cause they can, as opposed to thoughtful thinking how some of the stuff is designed, you know, um. The, I don't remember, I don't know if you remember this, but there was a project, um, you know, way back when, um, there was gonna be two high-rise buildings on the, um, Elsa Brandy side of Apian Way, right on the side of freeway. And, uh, you know, they were unveiled, and most of it had a little bell, bell thud, which is about everybody, and that was the last time we saw them. And they were really, really tall, they weren't just like four or five-story building, I think they were much bigger than that from what I remember, at least they looked that way. So I think we have to be very careful in introducing high-rise buildings of any sort. Cause you have to remember why people live in Penole, it's a small town. And, uh, that kind of a development is gonna make significant changes in how Penole looks. You know, it affects how, you know, traffic and, uh, just, you know, open space, and there's several things that will occur in that. So those have to be looked very, very carefully. I'm getting some pushback on some of the, like, the one project over at where the Kmart was, cause the, the thing I'm hearing from people is, why isn't that mixed-use? It was zoned for that. And, um, I think, David, you mentioned about, if I'm thinking about the same kind of thing, where the, um, the CMU, if, uh, can have hundred percent housing, that they provide the community benefits. Well, the community benefits are a pretty murky definition, we don't know what that really is. And, um, there, there are people that are a little more extreme, I think, where they're saying, well, if there's, if, if there's affordable housing in there, does that mean we're gonna have people, you know, running into the stores and shoplifting, bring up a problem now in Fitzgerald? I mean, I would say, what about all the other people that are gonna be there buying food, buying stuff from there, so. But, um, at the same time, I'm kinda wondering how we're getting around some of this mixed-use where we're not doing mixed-use. Is it this, is this thing you described, David, is the hundred percent, um, type thing if they have community benefits?
Yeah.
Because I think if we're gonna have community benefits, they better be really real ones, as opposed to token ones.
Right.
And when I think of, of, of that particular project, and I liked it, but when I think of any community benefits, I can't think of any really. Cause they're everything that's there in terms of space, while it goes for the, for the project as opposed to anything else. So, well, you know.
I have to be a little more busy about that. Yeah, well, we, when the project comes before you guys, we'll, you know, it'll be, you know, it'll be ferreted out and what we need to do in terms of that. So I don't wanna get into that tonight, because it's still, it's still, we're still percolating some issues with them, and we're still working with them on, on issues, so. Um, yeah, so when you see it, either they, yeah, I mean, they.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring that up, cause this is what I've been hearing within the community, so.
Tim, I wanna add one thing, a couple of things. First of all, I, I, you know, David wants to bring up the thing about, uh, commercial use, and, uh, you know, the fact is that that area does have commercial properties, so you can't really look at one, uh, project and say, oh, it has to be fifty percent commercial, fifty percent residential, I think you gotta look at the whole, whole, but I don't wanna say anymore about that. But you brought up something that really bothers me about the perception of affordable housing, is that everybody thinks you're bringing in, uh, criminals that are, you know, gonna be shoplifting and, uh, you know, all the stores and all that kinda stuff, but these are the people that work in the stores, these are people, these are teachers. Uh, these are the Uber drivers, the, you know, they're people who are hard-working people that just aren't making enough money to be able to afford housing in the Bay Area. And it, it kind of riles me when people go like, you know, gosh, we're just gonna bring in a bunch of criminals, you know? That, that's not the case, it's your baby, it's your kids, it's your kids who wanna live in Penole, you know, that can't afford to live in Penole.
Oh, yeah, I agree with you. And, uh, there, you know, there are gonna be, there are places that you can make a six-figure income and qualify as the upper, the upper-middle, low-income type thing, so. Uh, you know, they, if, if they did vote some kind of affordable housing in Arinda, they'd probably make a hundred thousand a year, cause they qualify for it, relative to itself.
Yeah.
So, uh, I, I do think you're right, I think it's, you know, there are people that, that in the past should've had a house, we could, could afford it, but just things have just, just changed, and, uh, this is a, a way for the people to, to find a good place to live and stay in the community. You know, I had a lot of friends, you know, I grew up in Martinez, and I had a lot of people that I graduated from high school with that lived in Sussoon, cause even back in nineteen seventy-seven, there was no way they could afford to live in Martinez. And now they'll never be able to go back. I mean, Martinez has houses now, they're going for easily over a million dollars, and they're just little houses. And, you know, we've seen that here and there in Penole as well, so, um. I just think that, um, as long as it's done carefully and with thought, and we're not giving away the store on some of these things, you know, just because we, cause, cause someone could ask for it, um, we have to be very careful. I think the things we've seen so far have been pretty good, and, um, the things that are coming are, are, are pretty good, but there's gonna be a lot of questions about them that we have to answer.
Right.
So, that's all I had for that. Uh, David, did you have anything else that you need to tell us?
Not from, not for, nothing, Dave, you may village, or you may corridor, no, I'm good, I'm good with that.
Okay. All right, so, well, if anyone, unless anyone has anything else, we can move on to the next thing.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I just wanna say, Justin, is there any comments, any, cause I have no public comments, so, Justin, you have a public comment over there?
I don't see any, um, public comment.
Perfect, okay.
Okay.
Um, just, just one thing, if you could, I remember, um, Mr. Hammond, when we were looking, uh, on the ad hoc committee, when we were looking at Apian Way, we did look at the list of community benefits. Um, and if you could direct us, I can't remember where they are in the general plan, if you could direct us to where they are?
They're in the land use, they're in the land use element, uh, section five, page twenty-three.
You haven't, I've got those at all, haven't you?
No, I just, you know, I just, 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 you know.
Just having to have it open.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, so good, so, so that's, that's something that, you know, people can even look up online to see what those community benefits are, and, um, yeah, what, what we can ask for as far as that goes. That's all I need to ask. Thanks.
Okay.
Chair Ben Wells, I think Raphael had his hand up before me.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Um, Chair, uh, I believe, uh, Raphael had his hand up before I did.
Oh, okay, I didn't see that, I'm sorry.
No worries.
I think both of my hands went up at about the same time, so she just showed one word or other. I just wanted to reiterate the point that, here's her current mate with her. reiterate the point that here's your current made with regards to, you know, what it actually means to be low income housing. Like the county, uh, PDF you can find on their website of income limits by housing size for their CDBT program. So for a two-person household, low income is eighty seven thousand, seven hundred thousand dollars a year. Very low income is fifty four thousand, eight hundred dollars a year. And extremely low is thirty two thousand, nine hundred. All of that's above the poverty line. Some is quite a bit above the poverty line, and that's just for a two-person household. You've got a four-person household and low income goes up above a hundred thousand dollars. So when people are saying, oh, having low income or affordable housing just means that there's going to be a criminal element moving into Pinole and ransacking the various shopping centers, I say, take a look at the charts that the county puts out with regards to, you know, what those income levels actually mean. It's not saying, you know, ten thousand, twenty thousand, whatever. Inflation and the overall massively increased cost of housing over the past several decades means that low income housing actually probably covers a lot of the people who are living in the community right now. And as they mentioned, their children as well.
That's a good point.
And I'd just like to add, um, kind of along what Raphael's point, specifically where I get my hair cut. The person that does my hair, her family, her son and his wife and their two kids lived in their garage for about three years. And every time, and he's an electrician that works in skyscrapers in San Francisco. So he makes that ninety, hundred thousand dollar a year income. But it was always the case that just as they got enough money to make that down payment, boom, our housing price went up again and again and again. He finally ended up living in Dixon. So he doesn't have a babysitter anymore for those kids. So, you know, that's just how we priced out, how our market has escalated. Said person still has her daughter who works for UPS and her two kids living with her also. And they're all living together because of the housing crisis we're in. So we need to be very, um, considerate of, these folks need places to go. And unfortunately, if you're working at UPS or you're an electrician, we're pushing those folks completely out. And we do need to solve this housing crisis. And I think we can be part of the solution. If we just are very thoughtful and put something really, um, considerate together for the community. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. So, um, next thing is the city planners and commissioners report. Um, I guess that's, starts with you, David.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things tonight. Uh, I wanted to update the commission to kind of let you know what your schedule is probably going to look like over the next probably three to four, two to four meetings. Um, the other three projects, the 2801 Pinole Valley Bridge, the, uh, will probably be coming to you in April. Uh, we've got, they've got to do some studies, some, some more studies on their property. They've got to get done. So that, that project's going to slip a little bit. Uh, Pinole Vista probably will be somewhere either the second meeting of March, first meeting of April, somewhere in that area. Uh, and the, uh, Apian Village project will probably you'll have at the end of next month. So that's where it's kind of leaning right now, where the projects are, are, are at and where we are in terms of processing. So with those, we also got an application for the Pinole Shores Two project. And so we're working on that, um, and starting the processing on that. So we sent them a complete letter. We're working on that. So we'll be working with them over the next probably four, three to five months to get something going. Where's the Pinole Shores Two? Uh, where Pinole Shores One is, that was old redevelopment property in the cities over in the industrial area over by, uh, A-12 San Pablo, right across from Sahas project or Pinole Shores. This is the business park? Yeah. Okay. So, yeah, so we got another project, we got a final, a project to finalize all that. So, um, nice, could be a nice project for us. And, uh, and so we'll be moving on that. And so with that, we're also working on our greenhouse gas program inventory. We're working on that. Hopefully get a, get a, uh, get a, uh, RFP out for a climate action plan here in the next probably sixty, sixty to ninety days. Um, also wanted to let you know that the project pages for all the projects are on our website now. We've updated planning website. So you can go to the, our city of Pinole planning website and you can find, you know, general information regarding the projects and where we are in terms of processing and, and all that. So I wanted to let the commission know that those are up and running. So if you know of anybody that wants, uh, needs information on this, on the existing projects that we have, you go to our website and we, we've opened up our project pages for, for our particular projects. We are, uh, so we're working on, we've got that. This, uh, from a city standpoint, it's kind of internal stuff for you guys, but uh, we're working on getting our new, uh, software for our, uh, planning and building permits. Uh, getting that fired up and started. So hopefully the next probably three, four months, we'll have a new, whole new look and, uh, and much more hopefully efficient and, uh, operation to, and more transparent, uh, type of, uh, type of stuff. For lack of term, sorry about that. Uh, third thing is that we might be going back to in-house meetings at the end of the month. I think the council is looking at potentially going back, uh, their next meeting on the fifteenth uh, this month. So our March meeting, we could be back in the chambers, but I'll keep you updated on that. You'll know, uh, uh, how, how that will all work. So they're in the process of working on like, we, we move after the council. We have a meeting the night before. I don't want to precede them. In that regard, I would see how this works and how we're, how we're going to be able to work, work it out. So they, I think they're going in on the fifteenth at their meeting, uh, and then we'll, we'll be coming in on the twenty eighth. So, so just keep, if not probably, if we don't come in in that March meeting, then we'll probably come in in April, unless something, unless something. Will you remind us where the city hall is? Yeah, I will. I'll send you a map and directions and, and all that too. So it's, everybody knows where it's at.
That's a place for your mailboxes.
So, uh, so anyway, so we got that going on. Uh, let's see what else. Oh, also have the, uh, planning commissions academy, uh, that we, that the last one we did in person was when Anne, Sarah and Devon and I went back in, uh, way back in 2020. I before, I've heard from two of the commissioners. I heard Anne's not, doesn't want to attend. I've heard from Frankie who wants to attend. And I've got Raphael Scott signed up and all, already. So, uh, I'll be working with him on getting, because the city does pay for that. So I can get you some reimbursement uh, back for your, at least for your, for your, uh, for your, uh, uh, the, the, the six twenty-five, I think it was for the, the conference, depending on how many days you're on. So if there's anybody else that wants to go, let me know, uh, and, uh, and we'll go from there. So I know Frankie, you didn't need a place to stay. Correct?
No, it's, it's just a blessing to him.
Yeah. So, yeah. So, um, so, yeah. So anybody else who's looking to, wants to go or attend, let, let me know. It's, it is in person. So I will say that. Uh, so if it was, let me know.
What was that again?
Uh, it's March sixteenth through the eighteenth, I think. Pull it up real quick.
Yeah, sixteenth through the eighteenth was what I saw.
Yeah. Yeah, March sixteenth through the eighteenth. So it's a Wednesday through a Friday. Wednesday through, yeah, Wednesday through Friday.
St. Patrick's Day.
That's right. Seventeen. That should be fun.
Maybe I will need that hotel.
Uh, so anyway, so if there's anybody who wants to, anybody else who wants to go, let me know. All right. And with that, that's, that's, uh, all I have.
Okay. Um, let me go to communications. Does anyone have anything they need to want to mention or?
Yeah, I, I, I do. Um, you know, they, um, it's, it's been really nice to have these Zoom meeting, uh, capabilities because, you know, sometimes we're not able to make the, the meetings and it's really nice to be able, if we could participate, if there's a way we could participate. Um, you know, uh, remotely if we're, we're not available, which briefly to my next point is that I probably will not be available for the March fourteenth meeting if we have that.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. You know, there always was a way to do this from home, like if you were sick or something, or, or you couldn't come into the city hall. It was just kind of an ordeal. Now it's, you know, way, way easier. Once, if, if your sound works like, like I'm not having, but, um, uh, but yeah, there was always a way to do it.
Yeah.
So it was just, you know, technology's caught up with it.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll do a look at that. So.
I mean, that, when we go back in, there's always the option. It's not, I think, how can we do it?
Yeah, there could be some hybrids. I mean, I, you know, there could be where staffs and we're still in our offices. I mean, it, there's a lot of different things that, and that's why we want the council to go first. So to see how, what they do and how they do it, that kind of stuff. And they're still working out, they're still working out some of those issues that, uh, that we still need to, that we'll, that we'll need to take care of, we'll need to take off. But hopefully we'll do it in a much smoother transition. So.
Um, I have a, a couple of questions. Sorry, Dave, are you ready?
No, I'm not. I'm not ready.
It's not, it's not a long list, actually. Um, I had talked in our December meeting when we were talking about SB nine. Uh, the setting of objective standards.
Yeah.
And, um, you said that we had until March of 2022, which is like now to craft any objective standards, um, which could be considered in going to the, the, um, you know, to come to us and go to the city council. Um, objective standards as far as development kinds of things. I mean, I have, I have, I mean, I know I haven't thought of any potential things or whatever has, have talked about that at all?
Oh, yeah, we're, we're, yeah, we're talking about it. Uh, we probably, we're trying right now. We're working, we're, we're, it's kind of a chicken and egg. What city's going first? Uh, and so we're picking, we're, we're looking at some of what the cities have done for SB nine uh, and taking a look at some of the things that they're doing. Uh, and, and we'll be putting those together and bringing those in front of you guys. There are, there are some cities that are doing emergency ordinances and that's something that we can take a look at, which will go directly to the council. So, you know, we could be doing that, putting emergency ordinance in place. However, however, and if we do that by March, then we can always come back. We can come back and admit that and do all that. So there are some things that we're, we're still looking at doing. We, we definitely will be adopting objective standards uh, for SB nine and for, it will have to, even in our zoning codes and our uh, specific plan codes and all that, we, we, we need to, uh, objective standards are becoming more and more the norm in those documents as well. So it's not just for SB nine, it's for everything that we do. So, uh, so we'll be continuing on working on this and, and and again, we'll probably be bringing to you guys probably the second meeting in March. Uh, some, uh, some of, some of what other cities have been doing. Uh, let the, you know, kind of give a little bit of an analysis of what that would mean for us or how, how that would affect us. And that we've gotten one, we've only gotten one. One, uh, uh, person inclined to, or not inclined, but their inquiry regarding SB nine, at least at this point, projects. So it's something that we've got to take a look at. And I mean, there are, there are, there are laws in place. So, I mean, but we do have some, just like all the other housing laws, we do have some things that we can do as long as they're objective and they follow through the ministerial project that these SB nine projects are. So, um, but we're, we're working, we're, we're still working towards them because we need them not just for the SB nine stuff, but we need it for everything else as well.
Right. Yeah. And, and I was thinking about that. I mean, it was just brought up in the context of SB nine though.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, for us to have as much control as possible over, you know, whatever legal thing we can work out.
Yeah.
From, you know, the, the, the state's mandates kind of thing. So, um, excellent. Great. That, that's really helpful. I appreciate that. Um, do you have an update when, um, the historical overlay and how committee will be meeting again?
No, in fact, I've got to follow up with Alex on that because I've gotten some other comments from other people regarding that committee and where, where we're at with that and where the council is with that. So I'll probably go, I'll, I'll try and get some more information for you about your next meeting and where we're at with that and what that, what we're going to do. So, um, I'll, I'll, I'll look at it with Alex and get back to you on that one.
That's great. Cause it, we, we just don't want to drop that ball.
Yeah.
I mean, it loses the whole.
The momentum? Yeah. No, I got you.
Yeah.
Well, I'll talk, I'll talk to Alex. I mean, he's, 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 he's kind of, he's kind of spearheading that through the council and, and, uh, so we'll, we'll see where he's at. And I think he's come back to the commission, which I think it does with some of the changes that they're making, but I'm not positive. Uh, but we'll, I, I know we haven't made the changes yet in the, in the, uh, in the design guidelines at this point. Uh, I know that we're still in the process of doing that. But, uh, I don't know where, where we need to be, where this, where the, where the end game is. So we need to talk to Alex and get that to where we need it to be. So.
Excellent. Great. Thank you. Good. I'm glad it stays on the radar still.
Yeah.
Do you have an update on, um, a couple of things? One, that entrance to, um, entrance to Pinole right off of I-80? Remember you said there would be like a granite boulder or something like that? Do we have a, a time? Projection as far as what that might look like? Or when that might happen?
On I-80? On it?
From the, um, the, I believe it was the, right by the, um, the, the beautiful building?
Oh, um, that I.
I could be making that up.
Yeah, I'm not sure what, what we're doing there. I know we talked about the fence over there and that was all transit property. Um, so, I mean, it goes well with our block wall. Uh, but, uh, I'm going to be boulders. The only boulder we talked about was potentially moving one in by the creek as, as part of the park bench. You know, those boulder benches, you know, kind of like that instead of like a park bench or something solid, something more that can't be taken, you know, that kind of stuff.
Right. Right. Okay. Okay. Well, maybe I'm conflating the two, the two different things. So, okay. Well, we'll see how all that, that, um, plays out.
Okay.
Um, and yeah, uh, just as far as, this is a code enforcement issue, I guess. I'm just wondering about the, the street tree that was removed on San Pablo Avenue, um, the, the PC, what is it? Uh, the realty place, the, the bright yellow building in Old Town?
Oh, yeah.
If, I mean, all up on when that tree is going to be replaced?
I'll have to check with Joe on that. Cause they're, the public works is running that show right now. So I'll, I'll talk to Joe. So I know, I know they had some issues with the grate. I know they were, I know, uh, my last, last time I talked to him, they were talking about the grate, how trying to get one, get one that looks like the, kind of similar to the other ones and that kind of stuff. But I'll see, I'll follow up with Joe, see where he's at on that. From the real estate.
That, that'd be great because, yeah, we don't want to be losing trees.
Right.
Especially illegally. So.
Right.
You're right. Okay. That, that's it for me. City talk, it wasn't a long list.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Uh, did anybody else have any, uh, communication, communications? Seeing none, uh, our next meeting, which may be inside. It's going to be, well, actually later on, I guess, but this one's at March fourteenth at seven PM. And with that, I adjourn this meeting.
Hey, we'll take care.
All right.
Thanks.
Come in and work with me. Bye.